Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. This meeting is being video recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please sign into all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And as always, we will be giving the pledge of allegiance. So please stand.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America. It's liberating our life, religious stance, our nation under God, and with his love, liberty, and justice for all.
And I do need to take a quick motion, please, to officially open our meeting by vote. A second. Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Betancourt?
Yes.
Ms. DeDewar?
Yes.
Ms. DeDewar?
Yes.
We'll start with our consent agenda. I can request a motion, please, to approve the school committee meeting, excuse me, meeting minutes of May 7th, 2024, and all paywalls and warrants. So...
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Let's see. None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And does it appear that we have anyone noted to speak at delegation for public comments? So we'll move on to new business, and I will quickly hand it over to Dr. Bailey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First thing on my report tonight, I'd like to have Ms. Rickery and Ms. Chesney come up to the podium to talk about Ignite Reading Program. This is a grant that we had talked about earlier in the year, but we just wanted to give you the final synopsis of our program. Great.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee.
Good evening.
So we're excited to present to you tonight about the Ignite Reading Program that we started in January of this school year. So what is Ignite Reading?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ignite Reading is a 15-minute-a-day, one-to-one virtual tutoring sessions for, in our case, students in grades K to 3. It is a program that runs the upper grade levels as well, but we use the program for grades K to 3. And the students work with the same highly-trained tutor each day for the course of the amount of time that they are sitting in the seat working with the tutor. And these tutors are highly-trained in the science of reading, and they use differentiated instruction, and it's based on where the students kind of place into the program after a diagnostic test. And included with this Ignite Reading Program, we have a literacy specialist that works with our district and provides the schools and teachers with actionable feedback on data. So as Ms. Rickery said, students take a diagnostic test, and they are placed along this continuum that you see on the slideshow there. And then they move along, and there is a prescribed number of lessons that they have to do within each one of those domains. And as they are joined with the tutor, they are interacting. They have embedded assessments to see how well they are doing. And then all that information is downloaded to us in the meeting that Mr. Perry had just referenced as well. And we'll just continue because we can show you how the kids did. Actually, I think we have a video. Mr. Missler was going to show kind of what the experience would be for a student who is in...
In the Ignite Reading Program, students work one-on-one for 15 minutes every day with the same tutor. This allows the student and tutor to build a strong productive relationship where the student can feel safe and comfortable as they take on the rigorous work of learning how to read. At the beginning of our program, tutors conduct baseline diagnostics to determine each student's precise decoding gaps. Those decoding gaps determine which skills the student starts learning first. Apple, orange, porch. Good job. The student works on this skill with their tutor for 14 lessons. Lessons include intentional modeling and repeated practice in order to develop automaticity. As the student moves through the lesson, the tutor provides feedback when the student struggles.
Right. Ooh, look at that mouth now. Yeah, shut up. The student is very good.
If the student makes a mistake, the tutor will ask the student to try again to see if they can self-correct. If they make the mistake again, the tutor will give targeted, in-the-moment feedback and then ask the student to practice so they can solidify the code correctly.
Key.
Good.
Shh.
Oh, sound it out, right?
Ah.
The.
The.
Good. The goal is to close the gap as quickly as possible so the student can move forward and learn new skills. All the while, tutors are collecting data in real time. This data helps them further differentiate instruction for the student in the moment and the next day.
Fifteen words in one unmade me not happy of the broken battery. There's gonna be an intermating...
Tutors celebrate student progress with colorful confetti, fireworks, and virtual high-fives. Celebrations reinforce the joy factor of learning to read and boost students' confidence.
Any high five, you take great.
Beginning with blurs and digraphs, students have a daily fluency passage. This allows them to apply the pieces of the code they've learned to connect in text.
The bus was late.
My mom only told me we thought together.
I had insect.
After 14 lessons, the student is progress monitored. If the student demonstrates proficiency, they move to the next set of skills when they are able to strengthen their tutoring skills on even more rigorous words.
Do you want everything to work right?
Oh, my goodness.
We're all doing things that are powerful.
If they do not pass the progress monitoring assessment, the student moves through a reteach sequence.
What?
A beautiful relationship is built between the student and tutor as they still live growth together. Each tutor is their student's personal cheerleader, coaching and cheering them on as they navigate the wins and challenges of becoming a leader.
Thank you so much for working with me today. You did a wonderful job.
So we received funding through a grant with the Department of Education for the 75 seats that we had received. And that was the grant, the grant was for K to 3. And we started mid-year. So right after we assessed our students with the DIBELS test, which is like a reading assessment that we use and was an assessment that the state also uses to monitor, to monitor this. So once we had that middle-of-year assessment data, we looked back and identified students based on other data as well, but really mainly the beginning and middle-of-year DIBELS reading assessment data. So yeah, so this is, so what we're looking at here is the DIBELS data for only the students who we had identified to participate in Ignite Reading. And so BOY means beginning of the year. So BOY, middle of the year, and end of the year is there. And then you can see the number of students who were falling well below benchmark, below benchmark, at the benchmark, or above benchmark. So and then in that, there's a column change from beginning of year to middle of year. So the number of students that were kind of moving in and out of the categories. And the green column there is the movement that happens since we began Ignite or after we, after we had Ignite in place. So really, we saw a large number of students move out of that well below benchmark. And a lot of students moved out of the below-benchmark categories as well and move into the at and above benchmark. So it's like really positive data. I think our next slide will also show a little bit more. The first chart that you see is, again, the students that were identified in this year's Ignite. So we did not include this year's kindergarten. But we just looked at what they, how they grew from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, as well as middle of the year to end of year. Now, they have all this, you know, their reading intervention. If they work with a special educator, they also have access to their teacher and Lexia. So they definitely were showing growth the 22 to 23-year, but the growth is much more dramatic. Again, we're including a number of kindergarten students that were not in the first chart, but you can see the amount of growth from the middle of the year to the end of the year as compared to, you know, relatively the same student group previous year. And again, these are only the students that have been identified for Ignite. And it's quite a significant amount. You know, is it statistically perfect the way? We didn't know, but we wanted to compare apples to apples, so. And one of our, as we know, we've been talking a lot about special education and how are we addressing any possible gaps there. And I think that both Ms. Rickery and I were, and Dr. Bailey were so pleased with, and Ms. Betancourt were so pleased with the dramatic result in special education improvement. So I won't take the time to read all of these, but we have been meeting with students throughout the program, checking in, dropping in on the sessions, and just, you know, trying to get that regular feedback from students. And it has really been fully positive when meeting with the students. There were a few who said, a few meaning to, who said that they felt like they were maybe missing something by having to do this 15 minutes each day, but they also admittedly say, but it's helping me with my reading, and I would do it again. So the students basically all said that they would do it again, that they really felt like it was helping them with their reading. They felt more confident. They loved the confetti. They actually, they, it's really something to see because they're super engaged. And, you know, we learned a lot during the COVID closure and learning remotely. And we had our doubts when we, when we learned about this program being 100% remote. But they have created it in a way that is highly engaging for the students. And I can, like, on a personal note, my daughter participates in it, and she won't miss, like, she wouldn't miss it. If we're home, if she's homesick, she'll jump on, and like, she does not want to miss. She says she has a meeting. She has a meeting. She loves having a meeting. But they like it. And I, you know, I met with the first graders today, and same thing. They all said we would love to be able to do this again. So it's, it's, it's been a really positive experience.
And it's grant-funded through...
It's grant-funded through the end of this year.
Desi. So Desi, I mean, so we could just potentially reapply if that's relevant?
There's nothing posted at this point yet. I've been reaching out to Desi to find out. They are saying more to follow. So I don't know what will come down the pipeline, but I would imagine with this positive experience that we would like to have the opportunity again.
And just, when we say, we had, you said, I want to make sure I understand. We had 75 people who qualified. We happened to get all of that funded, right? We didn't have more than 75, and then didn't get funding, right?
I think, so there are probably some kids that were on the line that would have benefited. And if we had, maybe it would have been okay. But 75 seem to be a pretty big number for the amount of students that we typically service for Title I across those grades. And these seats are seats. They're not assigned to a student. So a student could...
They did, actually.
Yeah, and that did happen where a student kind of tested out or completed the program, and we were able to refill that seat with another student. So I kind of referred to this a little bit before, but one of the benefits is that there is a reading specialist who talks to us about how the kids are doing. We have a meeting that's a voluntary meeting that I do, we do have about half dozen teachers that go to every single time there's a meeting. And she talks about specific students, and the data that they have is so specific. It'll be to the letter that the child missed on a particular assessment. And just talking to this reading specialist as a former reading specialist myself, she, it's really, that was one of the things that I think is really unique about the program, that you have someone who is working on that, working with this group of tutors to make sure that all of their protocols are being followed exactly and that they're, they're getting that amount of time. That's definitely a benefit for us. Right, and that reading specialist would watch the recorded videos. So if a student is not making progress, they would watch those videos, work with that tutor, and try to suggest, you know, another path or something different to try. So we got a lot of data, and we've been receiving a lot of data from the Ignite people down to the second also, of how long students have been logging in, scoring. And this ties to our district's strategy by achieving, in the category of achieving academic excellence for all students and strengthening partnerships with parents in the larger community. And in that regard, this was a true collaboration with Desi in order to get this grant. And they were really excited about our willingness to accept this grant and kind of extend the early literacy, they have a huge early literacy push right now, and extend that work down on the South Coast.
What questions do you have for us?
So in regards to the data that you're capturing, there, I know they're being shared by the half a dozen tutors that show up, but is it also being shared to the teachers and are they changing their ways with students? Or have we not got to that level yet?
We get most of the teachers involved in that. If not, most of them have been talking during stat meetings, during any type of discussion that we might have. And sometimes these discussions even just happen in my office. Someone will say, oh, I'm really worried about this particular student. And then we'll, we'll talk about it in that way too, if that person hasn't been going in there. But a lot of the teachers do have, because we're not, every teacher at every grade level has a student in Ignite.
Thank you. How does the scheduling work? Like, how do you schedule a student for a session?
So this is probably one of the caveats, just to mention. When, because we did it at the time we did, and we knew that there were already intact groups, we chose to do it at a time when kids might be doing science or social studies or something like that. Is it ideal? No. And of course, we want that. But, you know, as a, again, as a reading specialist, there's only so much time. And if someone needs to close that gap, I don't know too many parents who would say, keep my kid in social studies or science, and that, you know, don't give them that 15-minute individual time. You know, we're not taking away something like PE or one of those specialties that, you know. Is it ideal? No. And that is one of the caveats. If we were to do it again, we could consider other scheduling. But the way that we scheduled, one of the comments by one of the coordinators was that because we had people who were overseeing it, we were able to be more on time and have less minutes missing from a particular session. So if you could, as you know, if you're in a classroom and you're trying to have your groups, and then these kids need to go on Ignite, and there's a technical difficulty, there's always a technical difficulty pretty much every day. Then you have to get up, and those kids are sitting there, and now you're going over to Ignite. And so that was the other trade-off. So she was actually impressed with how well the kids were quickly getting on, how well they were taught. Because they were all doing it at once, it was almost easy.
That's what I'm saying, they all do it at once.
But it's, but it's not ideal. And we don't like, we don't like to see them miss anything, but there's only so much time, and it's crucial that we get these kids reading.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. I would like to just mention that Mrs. Chesney and I, Mrs. Betancourt, and three, three of the teachers in the district are attending the Massachusetts Dyslexia Institute at the end of this month. And so we're going to be learning a lot about creating, we're going to be creating an action plan for identifying students who may have needs in reading and just kind of thinking about all of this, thinking about everything that I presented with the Student Opportunity Act, thinking about, there's so many things that we're doing right. This improved our data, but we didn't pull anything away. This was an add-on. Yeah, like, this was an add-on. So it wasn't like anything that pulled away, but these kids did get the additional 15 minutes a day. And so thinking about that and seeing that that additional 15 minutes in the model that they did pushed the kids over the edge to the point where it did, how can we, if we can't expect to get a grant, you know, moving forward, how can we model what we do here to get those kind of results in-house?
That's right.
That's great.
Thank you so much. We had said we wanted to look at the data. I appreciate everyone's flexibility and willingness to try this new program, but we had said from the get-go, that's 15 minutes a day, let's try it. And then we're going to see the data at the end, and we were really pleased with it and what we saw, so.
Great.
Okay, so next I have the Energy Management Services procurement. And I'm going to need a vote for this. So just to review our timeline here. On February 5th of this year, we did an RFQ, which is a Request for Qualifications for Energy Management Services that was published in the Central Register, the Standard Times, and our website as well. An optional pre-submission conference and facility tour was held on February 15th. We're interested SFOs toward our facilities and gathered additional information regarding this project. And response submissions were due to us by March 8th. Aperture at Public Schools received comprehensive submissions. And when I say comprehensive, they were extremely comprehensive. We're talking probably 300 pages each one from four SFOs, including Energy Efficient Investments, which is EEI, Energy Management Consultants, which is EFC, Siemens Industry, and Train Technologies. So initial evaluations were completed, and we narrowed it down to Siemens and Train. Additional discovery was issued to both Siemens and Train seeking clarifications and updates to various aspects of their written submissions. We had interviews with both of the lenders, and they were held on May 9th. Written responses to the additional discovery were received by the required due date of May 17th. Further, on May 21st, reference checks were conducted with the towns or the school districts in which Siemens and Trains had completed major projects for. So, and you know, we said from the get-go that with either one of these companies, we couldn't go on. They were both extremely strong candidates. So based on the final evaluations, Train was and is recommended to the school committee to vote to engage Train to undertake the investment-grade audit and develop a comprehensive energy management program consistent with the goals and objectives of the Aperture at Public Schools. Obviously, this is something we've been talking about for a while now, but we're continuing to move the project along, and we will continue to move along. We get the vote tonight with the work actually starting this summer with the assessment.
All right, so with that, I'd like to advance a motion to vote to engage Train to undertake the investment-grade audit and develop a comprehensive energy management program consistent with the goals and objectives of APS.
So moved.
Is there any discussion or question? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next, we have the SNEC, the Collaborative Rental Contract. And I have that in your packets. And I would just need a vote to accept that. And I think the only difference is they're just renting, based on their needs, a little less space than usual, but it's based on their needs.
Okay, I can request a motion, please, to approve the memorandum agreement between the Aperture at School Committee and SNEC. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, is there, are there any questions or further discussion? Decision done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Mr. Missler, our Director of Technology, to the podium to give us an update on technology.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, school committee members, Dr. Bailey. I've got some quick updates, but pretty good ones. We have completed the installation of our new phone system. The system takes care of all the problems that we potentially could have had. It takes care of a lot of the statutes that the federal, excuse me, the FCC put in place. One thing that we did do pretty well on is, as you can see in that document we provided, from all the hardware we put in place and all the weekends we put in, we worked here on a bunch of weekends, we saved $50,000 off that project in the whole. So that means we took that on so they didn't have to do that. And that money's going to go both back to the schools and to the town. So our goal is not only to ensure that we have our staff and students and families best interest in mind, but also that of the town Aperture. We're in the process of collecting our 1,000 Chromebooks for the end of the school year. And we've sent out an email today for families just to remind them of the collection date. And also, this, I just want to take a second to remind families for next year. We're going to send something out in August to please take our insurance. It's great, it's cheap, and it'll save you a lot of money. We really want you to go that way. It saves a lot of time. We're also doing our summer plan. So I kind of went into a little bit about our communication in the department in this note. So we have a lot of connection in our department. We also have monthly team meetings where we get to talk about everything. We share to each other. We get to do some internal PD during those days. We get to talk about recycling and including our summer plan. So we've got a pretty good setup for the summer. On top of that, we have district updates. A couple of things that are going to be changed. This is going to save a bunch of money, and it's kind of the efficiencies that we've been building as we've been moving along. So one thing you'll notice is, you've probably already seen this, there's a slight change on the emails and phone calls and texts that you're getting from the district. We're going away from a one-call system to Thrill Share. We put that in place with all the administrators to have a one-painted glass. So our website does robo-calling, it does our website, it does the mobile website, and a couple of other bells and whistles. So they'll save us some money. Also, we're going to be moving away from SMO, that's our district newsletter. Doesn't mean we're getting away from a district newsletter. It just means we're getting away from that platform. We're going towards a Google Doc, which is free for us and gives us all the same functionality. So we're kind of thinking, hey, that's a great way to save money as well. So that's going to be coming in place here in short order. So families, please notice that Thrill Share change that is us. Any questions?
So for the Google Docs, does that mean parents have to make sure that they have a Gmail account and they're going to have to log in and all that?
Not at all. So what we're going to wind up doing is putting out this PDF on the website. So you'll be able to go right to it, click on it, it looks like a PDF. You don't have to sign in, you don't have to do it.
Great. Thank you. That's fantastic.
Thank you, Mr. Missler. And I just want to say I really appreciate all of your work and efforts in your whole department. I mean, saving money on that one project, $50,000, is a big win for the district as well as the town. So thank you. Next up, we have a school committee calendar. And the only difference we have there, instead of the first Tuesday of the month, we're going to try the second Tuesday if it's okay with everybody here. The subcommittees, obviously, we're always juggling those around when we have to. But the school committee dates will be the ones that we'll try to keep, you know, pretty consistent on this calendar. So is everybody okay? Or is there any discussion about some changes, potential changes with this calendar that we proposed?
So the only changes is the school committee meetings will be the second Tuesday and not until the first.
Yes.
Are we talking about the time of those meetings were?
It's up to the committee.
Yeah, I would put it open for discussion. I think, I don't know if this would matter, I just don't. I want to thought that I have would six o'clock start time be better for, not necessarily us, it might be better for me, but that's a relative. But just families and other people, it might give a little more time to actually come attend the meeting. I don't know if that's true, but I do think 5:30 at times can be a bit challenging for folks. So not trying to extend everyone's night, but it's a thought.
But I'm happy to write this fine with Nick. I mean, what's this?
I support that, maybe six o'clock, just because it's easy to remember.
I've done it, I've had meetings here at six o'clock before, and it didn't make a difference, but if it pisses the committee off, I'm not going to.
I think we can try it. We can always vote to go back. I guess I need to say, you know, and I've kind of talked with you about this before, Dr. Bailey, trying to keep the agendas tight, especially nights when we have executive session, you know, and those nights when we know we're going into an executive session, just keep, maybe skip a report, you know, that, that's not essential to maybe have a meeting, just to kind of keep things rolling, but...
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah. Do we need to vote on that?
We don't, but if we want.
We can just try it out and see, see, I don't think we need to vote, but just see how it goes. And if...
So are they scheduled? So we've scheduled them for six o'clock, we'll see how it goes, and if we feel that we need to change at any point in time, just put it, we'll go back to the five o'clock meeting, bye.
Sounds good, okay.
And we also want the subcommittee meetings at six?
Might as well, right?
That's easy, it's. Yep.
Six?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
But can we also have the school committee meetings on the general calendar?
Yeah, we're gonna work on that, we were just talking about it. It looks like it won't fit, but all of the black writing is smaller for this purpose, to fit the school committee dates on. So the font on the calendar that's posted is actually bigger, so people can see it. But we will try to get the regular, just the regular school committee meetings on.
And that way, parents will know.
Yes, absolutely.
Without having to go anywhere else on our website.
Yes, no problem at all. Okay, next up, we have, we're approaching the mid-cycle, my two-year evaluation cycle. And if you recall, earlier in the year, we reviewed my goals, the committee voted on the goals, and now it's that halfway point, right? The interesting thing about this year is, we started Board Docs in January. Okay, so we didn't start it right in the beginning of the year, so we're a little bit mixed in the way that you're gonna see things. But I'd really like to focus on the Board Docs, because Board Docs definitely tracks things. Like when you listen to the presentations, and they're always aligning them with our district plan, we can manually put in, when we're getting this agenda prepared, what goal does it relate to? What standard does it relate to? And Board Docs takes care of that for you, okay? So if you remember, last year, there was a document, and for the past several years, a document that looked like this, and it's because we didn't have Board Docs. So what I did is, I just started it again this year from, you know, the summertime through December, and I built a few things on it, okay? But really, moving forward, because we have a whole other year now to use Board Docs, and I put separate packets in your file on this, but really, technically, you could actually go into Board Docs and access these reports and links yourself. So for example, there's a packet, Student Learning Goal Number One, okay? Anything that deleted that we talked about at School Committee is going to be printed on this report, which is mine, I can give you the piece of paper, but the reason why it's better to access it, because you can actually click on the links if you're interested in looking at anything again, to jog in memory from something from five months ago, okay? So in addition to the goals, it does the same thing for the standards. And I included the rubrics, the superintendent's evaluation rubric again, as you know, I know you're all familiar with this. No one's new on the committee, we've done this before. So I basically wrote a memo to you that I do appreciate the collaboration. I think that our schools are doing really well, and I do think it stems from the top in terms of your support of me, your support of our leadership team, and I am very grateful for that, because I know not all districts have a working relationship like that. So I personally wanna thank you all for the support and the collaboration that we continue to move forward with. So, you know, I know all of this is in your packet, I'm sure you don't want me to review everything that we've gone over this year. But what I did do today, and if you saw your email, I sent you a Google survey, okay? And on the Google survey, because this is considered a formative evaluation, which is a mid-year check-in, it's a little bit different than the end of the year, the end of the cycle summative evaluation. So the check-in, you don't need as much information. The most important thing that we, as a district, have to report to DESI are the ratings of just the standards. We don't have to report the goal ratings, we don't have to report, there's no comments that get reported. So the most important thing this year is that those ratings, you fill out the form, it will probably take you hopefully no more than ten minutes. Mr. Sornis will gather that information, so that all goes into an Excel sheet to her. She tabulates and basically comes up with one rating based on everyone's rating, okay? So there's really nothing different. And in the survey, if you looked at it, I put directions at the beginning of that survey, to say what's required, what's not. You'll usually see like a red asterisk with what's required, and then things that are not, like the comments, are not required. Of course, I welcome the feedback and welcome to spend more time, but just for the purpose of the formative evaluation, I definitely need ratings from everybody.
And what does this do, I can see.
The eight, I believe I had the eighteenth on there, hold on, let me just double-check. Yep, it's two weeks from now, two thirty, June eighteenth, I thought that was enough time to give everybody. And I would welcome your phone calls, if you wanna do it in a digital way, we can do that. But yeah, you can call me, like if you're looking over something and you're not quite sure of the rubric, or a question on something that was presented that you're not clear on or need clarification, please call me.
Is the survey the same survey we've been using for the past, because it's the same format?
Yes, it's the same exact format. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. All right, the next thing I have, as you know, we had a student pass away, Porterville Met, and I know that we had parents on the PTO, parents, I know Ms. Melissa Panera was also involved in this, but they had purchased a bench, like a buddy bench, in his memory, and we don't have it yet. But according to our policy, we need to get School Committee approval for when we do receive it, to accept the donation. So tonight, I would be looking for a vote. I'm recommending that, you know, you would obviously accept the donation, and this, we would do something special in his memory. And I know that we've already talked about some really special ideas with some children from his class, et cetera, doing some readings, about friendship and things like that. So we're looking forward to that opportunity. Also, our teacher might be involved with decorating the bench and working with students on that. So it's truly, you know, a project that's inclusive of many, many stakeholders. So I would appreciate your vote and the affirmative on that. Yeah, I don't, has a few of anything you wanna say about this?
Um, no, just the buddy bench, what happened, we approached Buddy Bench, and they reach out, and they find a family who will essentially pay for the Buddy Bench. So there was a family, I believe they're in Florida, they lost their dad to brain cancer. So they actually bought the Buddy Bench for us, for four. So they actually, whenever we have it all done, they actually wanna fly down and be part of it.
That's really nice.
So I don't, that's still in the works, and I know.
Right.
That's how his family wanted, he wanted a celebration, we were trying to do it in May around his birthday. It's just, it just can't happen.
Right.
Whenever it's done, we'll proceed.
Is it on, I think it's on backorder or something, we've been waiting for it to get delivered.
I think so.
Yeah.
But it will be here.
Okay, well.
I appreciate everything you guys have done to.
Of course.
Make that happen, I know it's amazing.
All right, great, well, happy to ask to advance a motion to accept the donation of the Buddy Bench as per policy KCD, public gifts to the schools.
So moved, second.
Okay, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and that was very important.
It's like every time you proceed, yeah. This is managers' report.
Chairperson Downing, School Committee, thank you for your time tonight. How great were the pride awards earlier, huh?
So nice, so good.
And just the amount of joy and smiles on everyone's face, and, you know, test scores aside, to be able to celebrate the character of our students. I kinda love being a part of those things, it was really special. So thank you guys for that, Superintendent's Office, and everybody on the leadership team for coordinating that. To keep the agenda tight, as Chairperson Downing, I might graze over some of these items, but stop maybe if you can. Some of them just a redundant with what we've talked about in other areas, so. Moving forward, FY twenty-four budget, you know, we're coming to a close on the year here. There's about two point two million dollars left in our budget, about one point seven of that is salaries. So, you know, that leaves some other funds for miscellaneous expenses that we continue to have related to contracted services, facilities, utilities, things like that, and then we have some calculated savings that we'll talk about with the budget transfers. And, you know, I'll allude to that a little bit right here, there's gonna be a focus on facilities and the student services and special education, tuitions, prepayment as planned in FY twenty-five budget, that we'll be dealing with with those savings, so. Uh, let's see, the FY twenty-five budget, on May twenty-ninth, the Finance Committee announced that the town finally had a balanced budget to present a town meeting, in which they also voted unanimously to approve the school budget. So, you know, great job, everybody, I know we all had a part in that, and, you know, it's a going process, but I think we got where we wanted to be with level services, and we're very satisfied with that product, so. Everybody still come out on June seventeenth to spring annual town meeting and help support the schools and the budget and the initiatives. Facilities, as Superintendent Bailey communicated, we're moving forward with our ESCO, thanks to your vote for the investment-grade audit. We hope to have a kickoff meeting as soon as next week with Train and our owner's agent, and they'll jump right in, start them to collect documents, getting in our buildings, testing, measuring, just everything right away. And that'll happen throughout the summer with hopes, oh, not hopes, we have a hard deadline to get all that data together, compile the report itself, and build up Fall Town Meeting to secure funding for whatever projects we decide to move forward. As we know, there's a focus on air quality and dehumidification. Custodial services, so many times throughout the year, we've reported our difficulties in hiring custodians and retaining custodians. It, you know, it came to a, you know, a meeting again with the union representatives, with the unit member, custodial member, and the team members, to see how can we proceed forward to keep our buildings clean and to have these services. I mean, we've obviously been paying overtime, using substitutes, everything that it takes to keep these buildings clean. And we're doing our best, though I know some of us, even within that department, aren't satisfied with the end result, so. We finally came to an agreement to put a hiring freeze on the custodian unit and outsource our night custodians. But entirely, we don't know what that looks like, we have to go up to bid, but obviously, we're confined to our budget, and the vacancies open up, certain amount of savings for salaries that will be used to privatize these services for the time being. I think it's, you know, there's pros and cons to it, but at the end of the day, we want our buildings clean. I think there can be things that we can learn from these companies that we can take away once we can get back to hiring talent and securing talent. But right now, we've all come to an agreement that that's what we need. In addition, that's also gonna happen with floor maintenance services. So a lot, many of you may not know that, a lot of our summer is emptying classrooms and stripping and waxing the floors and battling with the weather and the humidity for wax to cure and to get the classrooms. It's, you know, the last day of school all the way to the first day of school. So by contracting those out, it gives our team, you know, a little bit of alleviated stress, but focus on, you know, the other areas, just keeping the buildings clean. We have summer programming, we have dehumidifiers that we have to empty. Some of these walls we painted for the last decade, you know, we're gonna get painting. There's gonna be a lot of hard work that goes into it, but this kinda gives us that flexibility with the three-man crew that we're rolling with right now, so. That's also in the works, and I know I've communicated with that, communicated about that in the past. Any questions on that, just in the note we reported there, I know that's kind of a change?
This would be, you see this contractual agreement happening for one year, and then reevaluating where we're at.
So I imagine, you know, there's a fiscal benefit to having optional years, just to see what the price point will look like. If a vendor knows that they could secure us for one year plus optional years, they might give us a better upfront cost. So I think that would be the strategy. But yes, at the end of the day, we'll go up to bid, we'll evaluate those bids, and then it'll be a ten-month contract from, you know, August twenty-eighth, whatever the first day of school is, till June X, is the last day of school, and then we'll reevaluate from there. As you guys may know, we have negotiations coming into play next year too, so depending on where those go, maybe that helps us, you know, secure more talent, we don't know, but yes, one year with options, and then we'll discuss it.
And to make this happen, we did work with the ATA to put this hiring freeze together, and they were in agreement, so.
Yeah.
We're working together collaboratively to keep our schools clean.
Are we hiring, or are the prisoners coming in to paint, do we still do that?
From what I've heard, and that was more so the facilities director and I think Superintendent Bailey coordinating that, once the new sheriff sort of took over, I guess that.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, there wasn't so much availability. We obviously are always gonna take what we can get, but right now, yeah.
Are you concerned about those cane bulbs?
We talked about that in the past, and I think we have plans to do it again, so, you know, we'll try and see what comes of it.
I have a question. Does the Pacheco bill apply to local communities? Pacheco Bill passed some, you know, legislation some time ago, and it, you know, it, it sounded like prohibited state services privatization, and I'm just, you know, I limited it, and I'm just wondering if it applies to.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you there, I know within this, you know, the industry of schools and school districts, more often than not, they're privatizing custodian services, and again, that's not a long-term goal.
I wanna make that clear.
It's just. Yeah, no, it's been a topic, not only, you know, internally, but on the listserv for business managers at Masbowl. It's happening everywhere, it's similar to, you know, teacher, teacher needs and finding teachers to staff, and it's just kind of across our industry right now. Food services, I'm gonna save those updates for our presentation. Shirley Mello, our Food Service Director, will be following up after this, and I'm excited for her to share, you know, the goals and accomplishments we've made and what we continue to strive through. Transportation, we opened registration mid-May, similar to last year, same process. We've already got a lot of feedback and submissions, which is great. We are, again, entering into a new contract with our bus vendor, AMRA, and we're gonna look at every route and every stop and see what we need to consolidate, and where we can have, you know, stops, and what's safe and what's not. What we did do differently this year is we opened registration up to our high school students from A cushionet and Fairhaven and New Bedford that supported sharing out our registration. And it just gives us, it helps confirm the data that we have and knowing our ridership, and if we need X amount of buses for our high school teams, or if there's a better way, so. Again, it's just being responsible, evaluating our data, and if there's savings, great, if there's additional needs, we wanna be equitable. So we're looking at everything. And again, you know, town meeting, that contract will go up to vote, because it's a three-year contract with two option years, so we ask for the support there, because the industry of buses is just skyrocketing too. And if we can lock in those rates now, to have optional years at these little rates before something takes off in the future, it's advantageous to us, which, you know, is advantageous to the town and savings. So that's it regarding my Business Managers Report, again, any questions there?
No, just hear me out.
Sure.
I feel like the words. So I was just thinking, we have so much data in the school, from, you know, academic to bus riding, everything. Has the school ever thought about selling it to private companies? Because they need data, right?
It's public record, unfortunately, so.
Everything that we do, like the dibbles and all of that stuff, it's all public record?
After we redact what we need to redact, it's.
It's public?
It's public. Why? If you find a way, I will join that business with you and sell. I'll sell public data.
State's doing it, so my.
I mean, yeah, we talk about negotiations, not to get off topic, and analytics, and essentially, there's a super, a former superintendent out there that's running analytic company that's publicly requesting everybody's unit contracts, compiling the data, putting it into spreadsheets, and selling that service, so I get where you're going with it, but.
It's big, to help the town.
No, I wish.
I quit, I'm gonna go do this. Thank you.
All right, so moving on, declaration surplus, so again, you know, we haven't had many opportunities to declare surplus this year, but we continually look to clean our spaces and turn over old and outdated material, so Chairperson Downing, I believe. So, chairperson Downing, I believe you have that form to sign if it's voted to declare surplus. But it's, it's all curriculum and instructional equipment. I think mostly textbooks, which are at best fifteen years older or older. Um, so I asked that to go to vote to declare surplus.
May I request a motion, please, to vote on the disposal of equipment or material that has grown up, so lead us to policy D and school property's disposal procedure? It's moved. Second. All those in favor, or are there any questions or discussion? Right? All those in favor? Bye.
Very great, moving right along. So, budget transfers, so this year I put it into a memo format. Um, you know, there's improvements here to next year, i- in the policy states quarterly reporting. And along that one, we can, we can work to do that sometimes. It doesn't seem necessary, but at least if I can address it quarterly, um, with the school committee, that might strengthen, um, you know, the communications there. But ultimately, what it boils down to, right, is at the end of the year, we have some budget savings, um, from vacancies and positions, from strategical savings, from grants that we acquired throughout the year that up to, that, you know, absorbed services that would otherwise have been absorbed locally. Um, and with that, we are asking to allocate or transfer funds um, according to this, this memo that I passed along. So, um, uh, uh, just to say out loud.
Just changing line items.
Yeah, it's just changing line items. And again, you know, it's with strategy to address, um, the other district contracts that we, that weren't expected this year, that are above and beyond, you know, our circuit breaker offset and our IDBA grants and things like that. It's to support the funding of the prepaid tuitions that we built into our F Y twenty-five budget that have to be paid out this year with this year's savings. Um, so that's really transfer one and then transfer two. Again, it's just to kind of pass costs to the facility side to replenish what we spent um, out of our revolving account. So, this one i- is interesting, right? So, we, we dealt with air quality throughout the year. We spent so much money out of our use of facilities rental fund because it was a place to put those expenses at the time. We didn't know what the future looked like, we didn't know what we were sure of. Now, we're going to transfer those funds back to local because local can absorb it and will leave those revolving accounts free for us to use in the future. Um, so there, there's strategy there, but it's always been a part of the strategy and it's just come to fruition now. Um, so that will help us moving forward. And then in addition, you know, there's some safety and security items that I don't want to advertise out loud that we want to work on, um, with this transfer as well if we can get those projects lined up and, and quoted before June thirtieth for ourselves.
Let's, let's kind of find out.
Yeah. So, with that, questions? Um, if not, I, again, I ask for that to go to vote. And then again, if things do fall through, it'll go according to plan between now. Technically, I believe we have till July fifteenth to line everything up and close up the books. Um, we'll approach the committee in August to, to reallocate the transfers, um, to, to have our budget aligned retroactively, if you will.
It has a, I can request a motion, please, to vote budget transfers between line items within a major account as defined by DESI for policy D J, a DBJ, budget transfer authority? It's moved. Second. Second. All of the pending discussion or further questions for Patrick? Saying done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Bye. Thank you.
All right, now, without further ado, I want to introduce to you our food services manager, Shelley Mello. Um, now, all joking aside, I'm, I'm so proud of Shelley and what she's accomplished in her short time as, as the food service director here. Uh, we kind of joined on at the same time and we bought into each other's plans, communications, strategies. Um, you know, I lean on her for information, she leans on me and this is our chance to kind of advertise that. You know, it's been a short time and I'm sure there's always going to be more requests and needs and goals, but, um, we've come a long way and, like I said, I'm proud of her. So, here we go, Shelley.
At least don't fix this, we can do that first. Madam Chairperson, it's food free. Dr. Bailey, thank you for having me. Just a quick overview, so both breakfast and lunch program are federally and state funded. We have to follow the meal pattern and nutritional, the nutritional guidelines to qualify for the reimbursements. The new thing to share is the community eligibility provision. So, that's the C E P. C E P is a high poverty district to serve. It's for high poverty districts and it allows them to serve all enrolled students free breakfast and lunch. Normally, our Kushner's were not qualified for that, but the percentages for poverty level just went from forty percent to twenty-five percent in October. So, we applied November and was approved in December. So, what that means for us is we do, we don't have to, um, fill out applications anymore. Massachusetts is one of eight states that are free anyway. But it gives the state an opportunity to pass off some of the reimbursements to the federal government, the federal funding. So, the federal funding will pay more and the state will pay less, but we'll get the same reimbursements.
The percent that you just mentioned, that's our percentage in the school? Or you said it was.
With approximately thirty-six. But it went from forty percent before we didn't qualify at forty percent. But then they changed it from twenty-five to forty, so anybody.
So, now we qualify.
Now, we qualify at about thirty-five and that's free and reduced. So, here's some of our taste testing and, um, meals, some of the new meals that the kids like. And now, I'd love to really talk about the, the main players of the program, you know? We don't care a lot about them, but they're in the back scenes and, and they're working and they're working hard. So, we have a vacancy in, in the elementary school for the cook manager. The staff members over there are Katie Verby, Carrie Lavasia and Jennifer Hood. In the middle school, it's Rachel Alves, Janelle Arabia, Kayla Furcheschi and Lorene Wula. And they, they all really, really work hard. As you can see, the, uh, the state has a, a meal per labor hour calculator and you should be doing, serving so many meals per labor hour. We're at eighteen, in the elementary school, we're at eighteen hours per labor hour per day, which is approximately twenty-two meals per labor hour in a state expects sixteen. So, we're, the labor is really stretched. We haven't done anything with labor since two thousand and eighteen. Now, that free reduced is permanent, we're selling thousands of meals more and we still haven't done anything with labor. So, that's something we need to evaluate. Um, the middle school is at approximately twenty meals per labor hour, almost twenty-one. And again, the state standards are sixty. We also have three real reliable subs that we can call in. And so, I'd like to thank them as well and give them some notoriety also. So, last year's goals were to spend down plan, which is started. We purchased some large equipment in March that'll be delivered this summer. Um, I'm expecting to purchase some more in September for December. We still have more equipment that we need to, that we need to, um, order and, and to help with the spend down plan. Now that I have a better understanding of the revenues and the expenses of the profit and loss, it'll be a little bit easier for me to see how with the spend down plan. Up until now, the profit and loss has been kind of tough because we had COVID first, where we were sending meals out the door. And then last year, we had the supply chain problems. So, we were spending more money than we would. This year is probably the first real accurate profit and loss that we can send down and, and start making a steady budget from. And that will help us, um, with the spend down plan. The benchmark for the spend down plan is three months of expenses. And that's, that's the DESI standards to keep that as revenue. So, that's where our benchmark is going. Cross-training, cross-training is, is something we just continue to do. And the permanent staff and substitutes are all cross-trained. They're cross-trained for different stations and they're also cross-trained for, to go from school to school for the most part. It just makes the kitchens more efficiently. So, if somebody's out, somebody else doesn't have to worry that they're going to end up on a station that they don't know how to deal with or they're not familiar with. So, the kitchen runs more efficiently for that. If we have multiple absences, we can accommodate that because everybody can work at any station. It helps with, um, production records. So, everybody knows how the production records work, why we're ordering food, how much we're cooking, temperatures, safety values as well. Today, we had a situation where one person was out. We didn't have any staff members that could come in at six-thirty in the morning. So, we borrowed one from the middle school that went over to the elementary from six-thirty to nine and then we got a sub from nine. So, that's where the cross-training really comes in handy. The next topic is the taste testing. So, the taste testing, we did a couple this year. Um, it helps with food choices. Students learn their food choices at a young age. And the taste testings help to introduce them to new, to new foods they're not usually, they don't normally have. The way we do it is we go out with a cart and I think you saw it in one of the photos. So, it gets their attention. They want to try what's on that cart just because they're not used to seeing that cart. So, it gets them the willingness to try new foods. And it also allows us to get student input. Whether they like it, if they don't like it, we did overnight oats last week and they really liked the taste, but they weren't sure of the texture. But if you get one student to buy in at that table about the texture, then they all like it. So, that's where the taste testing really gives us the upper hand. Uh, we, um, for the schedule and the menu, we have made some additions to the menu. This year, we did a barbecue po' pork on potato tots with cheese. Uh, chicken fajita taco, the chicken drumstick last week that the kids really enjoyed. And I'm hoping again to add the, um, overnight oats to the menu next year. Farm to school, we used about thirty percent of the farm to school funding that we had last year. So, we have about forty-two hundred dollars more to go through this year. I'm hoping to, um, we've used quite a few local farms. And I, what I don't want to do is use that money on items that they get it all the time. We can use it on certain farms that are locally, but I'd like to like, we did butternut squash fries. That's something that they, they don't normally have, the overnight oats. We used some of them for that. So, that's kind of, we did, um, butternut squash for Thanksgiving. We made cranberry sauce for Thanksgiving, things that they're not used to have and I would rather use the funds for, to get them to try new things than to just eat things that we can get because we have the grant. Um, equipment purchasing and inventory. So, again, we've started the, the purchasing of the equipment. The beginning of last year, we inventoried everything, we tagged it and we put it on a spreadsheet with the make, model and the year of it. So, that gave us a more accurate capital plan. On the capital plan, we have, we can, we can determine what it's going to cost next year if we hold off and what it's going to cost the year after. So, on this capital plan, we also have low, moderate or high. Is, is, does it need to be replaced now? Can we wait? And this way, also that will help with our spend down plan. What should we be spending the money on first and what can we hold off on? What's going to cost us more if we held off longer? The breakfast model is now we, we are compliant with the twenty-twenty-five, um, provisions from the state. So, all added sugar that we need to go down to is, is gone. We've added, um, cafe. We do have the breakfast desserts, the cinnamon roll, the mini donuts, the, um, chocolate chip muffin. But it's once a week. So, they only have, and, and that falls into the added sugar provision. So, they don't have it every Tuesday or every Thursday. They, on Wednesday, they get one of them and each week they get one. And that's how those are alternated. We have a smoothie now, we have the egg sandwiches more. I'd like to get into more stuff for the breakfast too. With, like I, I had shown you earlier, we're kind of stuck with labor right now. To be able to, to be able to extend the menu, we kind of may have to go to extending the labor, which again would go on, if possibly could come from the spend down plan. Um, educational wellness. So, I explained how I did the, the taste testing. This year, what we did, what I did was I had the cart and I had a poster on it and it had all the nutritionals on the poster. And I put the posters up in the, in the, throughout the school for the students to read. The more I looked at it, the more I thought the taste testing is going well, but maybe not so much the educational part of it. So, I met with Mrs. Chesney and Ms. Pacetto and we came up with a plan that next year, I'm assuming, I'm hoping all the positions are filled and all these things can be planned much more in advance and not, not, um, be kind of last minute things sometimes. What we'll do is we'll make flights for each classroom, we'll start advertising sooner. Mrs. Chesney and Ms. Pacetto will announce at lunchtime the nutritional values. And this way, when I come around with the cart, I'm sure they'll have more questions about that and they'll get more nutritional education that way than what they did this year. Gaining exposure and experiments. So, DESI does a town hall every Tuesday. So, I, I'm in those every Tuesday from two to three-thirty. Then I've done farm to school trainings. I'm still on the USDA advisory committee board, so we meet four times a year. Um, the USDA, the local directors meetings are twice a year in the area and it gives us an opportunity to see what we're all going through. You know, who's, has what for answers and, and so that, that burns my, staff that I have to go to. The big thing this year is the, the School Nutrition Association is doing, they do it national conference every year and this year, we're fortunate enough to have it be in Boston. So, that's a three-day conference and they have educational set, uh, sessions, exhibit halls, culinary, um, demonstrations. So, that will be Ju- July fourteenth to sixteenth. They're not normally from like eight o'clock in the morning till eight o'clock at night for three days, but really, we'll, we'll get a lot of information out of them. Here's the taste test cart that everybody logs. The two little ones on the, on the right there came up with a song about the oatmeal oats. Yeah, some of the farm to school items we had, so we had the, the garden salad and all those were fresh from local gardens. The butternut squash french fries, the butternut squash we used for Thanksgiving, the cranberries that we got from Jonathan Sprouts to use for the cranberry sauce. And now my goals for next year. So, all the previous goals will continue because they're all just going to, just keep revolving, the spend down, the cross-training, the taste testing, continue to strengthen the menu. Farm to school, equipment purchasing, breakfast model. The classroom education is one that I'm going to put on as a brand new one because again, I think the classroom and taste testing, because I think the taste testing worked led to try new things, but we certainly didn't get the total value out of it as if for, for the new plan that I, that we have come up with. I think the new one would be much more beneficial. I'd like to bring more events to the, to the cafeteria. We used to have a whole bunch of them all the time and then COVID kind of squashed them and, and the kids liked them and it got them to try new things. So, they, they have the A B C countdown at the elementary school and I thought maybe eat the alphabet would be a good one. So, each day they go down, they could do something like that. Um, the Thanksgiving dinner, the opening day for, for Red Sox and more, um, was more to have. Um, grants, we're going to continuous, continue to focus on the grants and applying for the grants. The profit, now that we have a clearer picture of, of what's going to be steady from the profit and loss, again, like I was saying earlier, the profit and loss for the last few years have been kind of wanted. It doesn't, it hasn't settled in at all and now it seems to be. We know that free breakfast and lunch is, is going to stay. Before, we weren't sure what to do because we didn't know if it was going to be permanent or not and now we know it is. Um, I'm going to meet with the business manager again. We meet often to, to come down with a concrete budget that we can, that we can certainly live by. Um, another one of the goals is going to be expanding labor. Again, like I said earlier, we have not raised labor since two thousand and eighteen and now that it's permanently, permanently free, the meals have increased quite a bit. So, the, the labor is really stretched out. It takes away from the ability to grow the menu. We just don't, even for the farm to school, that stuff takes so much extra time with preparing or we're staying late to prepare or I'm staying late after everybody else leaves to, to get things ready. So, I think the labor is something I really want to focus on this year. And food waste. There is a lot of food waste. I think if the students were more educated with that, we could, that would be helpful. Again, all the staff is learning production records, that's going to be more helpful. That I have been on a couple of trainings and there's more to come for food waste, so. So that's, um, those are my goals for this year. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions. Just really impressed with all the work you're doing. Great job.
Thank you.
Impressive, especially as you pointed out with the, with the lean staff, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work.
Just very impressed with the presentation.
I, I wanna thank Shelley and her team for everything. Um, every time I ask her for something, she's right there. She's extremely flexible. I know that, um, a couple of months back, I met with a group, I believe it was third graders. And we talked about things they love, things they want, opportunities for change in the school. And one of the things they talked about was they said, how come we don't have soup on the menu? And I thought, wow, that's pretty interesting that they want soup. And I went to Shelley and like probably the next week or two, whenever she was able to order it, we actually had a meal one day. And it was really important to me that we show the students that we do hear them and we hear their voices. And they have a lot of important things to add to what we do here. I mean, we're serving them. So the fact she's so easy to work with and her team, I mean, it's, it's been wonderful. And I just really appreciate the work that you've been putting in and, and Ms. McIntyre as well supervising that. So thank you.
Great. Um, okay. So that brings us to school committee member reports. Um, welcome. Any comments? I do have, uh, one, one comment. I wanna congratulate, um, Dr. Hal, uh, Mr. Halproff on your reelection to the school committee.
Thank you.
Glad to have you continuing to serve with us. Um, and then that brings to light for us that we can typically reorganize roles around the school committee after an election. So I think we're gonna try to schedule, um, a workshop to soon, uh, to discuss what that can look like. Um, so I don't know if we decided on a date. I think we're gonna have to circle that.
Yeah, we did not.
But I think we do it soon. Um, so keep an eye out for, um, dates for that workshop. Any other reports? All right. Um, just noting communications and information there in your packet to meet at your measure. And we do have executive, uh, executive session, um, this evening, so we will not be returning. Um, so if I could have a motion please to adjourn into executive session, not to return to open session. And that will be to discuss, uh, following, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations or negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Make a motion.
Okay, second. And do the, do the roll call. Mrs. Downing, yes. Yes, Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Halproff?
Yes.
Yes.